Mayor Borzner received an excused absence at the previous meeting. And I'm not sure on Mr. Farmer. Has anyone heard from him? All right, well, we'll go ahead and run the meeting, and if he does show up, great. If not, we'll take action afterward. Moving on to the active agenda, amending Title 17 of the Sycamore Municipal Code. Nancy Andrew.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, I am going to let Mr. Martin take the lead on this. He has done all of the work on it, and he has done quite a bit of research. So we're sure to have a good discussion. But I'm going to let him go ahead and get started.
And to the council. As you may remember, last city council meeting, I brought before you a force amendment for Title 17 of the zoning law. And Nancy, you told me to do a little more work. I did pretty good because it will be to branch out a little bit and look at some of what I presented to you. So items that I presented you were items that we talked about in Planning Commission. And I've set before you information and something I would like to go over that's in 6.08, which isn't necessarily the Planning Commission. I think it's a good topic to have, a good ordinance, a good chapter to talk about tonight. And maybe these two items will play off each other a little bit. So really, what I have for you is kind of a multi-part, multi-step ordinance. Title 17 is specifically in the zoning ordinance. And that talks, that enables planning, code enforcement, and the building department to kind of look at, to look at, it puts it in their purview. So it looks at permitting, it looks at the code enforcement. So kind of over here, in Chapter 6.08, that's primarily the city's livestock and poultry ordinance. That is where we find certain definitions, we find the sections, subsections for livestock prohibitive or poultry prohibitive, lawful sense, enforcement. And I put it before you, the 6.08, and I kind of wanted to go through it with the council and talk through the process at this point in time. So we ran into a couple of situations. A couple, actually, last week, week before that, we have one on hold in the court right now. Where we're trying to put together some sort of guidance for not the definition of livestock, specifically, even more specific than that. So what we're running into is basically what's before us here in Chapter 6.08. And the city is prohibited in this city. And the penalty is if the enforcement of the chief of police or their designee, any person who violates provisions of this chapter is guilty of missing. It is, it's not that, but it's not that simple, it's not that life and life. Really, there's, kind of what's happening right now is there is a police or animal control through main society. They go and issue it to anybody who might have chickens or other dog. The penalty is decided, they shall be, they shall be guilty. Goes to the courts, clerk, the clerk's attorney, and it goes to the judge. And probably nine times out of 10, it gets sent over. Spencer to guess, wager that the judge will probably ever. So I was just kind of thinking, okay, how can we make this a little bit better? How can we actually do something about this and address what occurred from the residents in our city and kind of address the topics missing in nowhere? So kind of what I have before you is also bolstering 6.08. So kind of the previous flow that I had, and to change it to, so first, the code enforcement can make contact, the police department and animal control can make contact. And set up a citation set. So if they have any hens or chickens at large, if they're in the legal property of them. And then I kind of, on page three of the packet, I kind of give out a bunch of that for you and propose additions to Chapter 6.08. So adding a couple definitions, bolstering what an animal control officer is, and code enforcement titles are, offer them the opportunity to give a citation to anybody who, and I put that there. So it would prohibit this slaughtering, and we would not allow that. Poultry at large, failure to remove weight, failure to keep pets in a habitable condition, or failure to remove. It would enable essential code enforcement or animal control to go after. I keep sure chickens in the backyard, keep them fat, keep them healthy. Let them out, make sure that they're not nuisance. And so that's kind of what I laid out here. And then I have for possible future actions would be testing and addressing Chapter 6.08, or of the Sycamore Municipal Code, which is going to be a much larger conversation. What I have before you. And then in the very, very back, I threw a sample of oppositions out there. So this is also just, you know, if it ends up coming to this point where we start going down the path of, okay, what do we actually need, something like an animal control officer to be a Sycamore type? What would that look like? What would their responsibilities be? I threw together, I gave you a couple of different things from areas within Washington. Just something to think about if we start to head down that.
Counsel, this is the markup process, so let's hear from us.
Absolutely. I was reading, I didn't have this, but I was reading the rest of this, and I wanted to go back and look at the past meetings that the Planning Commission. There's not one Planning Commission meeting on for this whole year.
I need to upload them, I'm a little bit behind on it. All right, I need to upload them. No, we've had them, I'm just a little bit behind on them.
So, you know, Mr. Martin, when stuff like this comes before the council, since we're prohibited from going to Planning Commission meetings because they're a decision-maker like we are, under the appearance of fairness doctrine, that's how council can then go back and look and see, were there any people during the public hearing? What did they have to say? What did the commission members actually weigh in on? Did they say anything? So that helps us in determining, I mean, we put a lot of faith in the Planning Commission. They're appointed by us, and we believe they do a great job. But at the same time, we're the ones that have to make the final decision. So we want to hear that process all the way through.
Absolutely.
And I could interject, we do have Louis at the, or Mr. Valdez at the, get in touch with him and ask him, if they're in a public shared drive, he would be able to help you. He's been doing wonderful jobs assisting, not only some of the questions that Jackie gets asked, but we have several new staff that haven't used our website builder. And so he's picked it up, and he's doing an awesome job on starting to update all of this stuff. I'm looking with Mary in Park for Rex right now, all registration, he's getting help for her. So I would let you know that that would be a resource for you to.
A little bit honest, I've been having a few months of chemo, or I've had a bit of trouble getting a form, which is also why.
In those situations, please, make sure that the chair reports to the mayor, right? Because that's how that process works. If they have three missed meetings and they're unexcused, the mayor will revoke their commission. They'll be rightfully. Okay. Counsel, questions, comments?
You know, when you go to buy chickens, you don't know whether they're going to be male or female. If you go buy three chickens, they could be all roosters. And what are the people going to do with the roosters? I mean, I'm on a chicken site, and a lot of the people, when they have roosters, they cull them, kill them. But they have a, you know, they have a lot of chickens. But where there's three chickens, I can just imagine them letting them loose. I mean, if you have a mean rooster out in your neighborhood, and how good are we at enforcing? How good are we at enforcing dogs? How good are we at enforcing? There's no enforcement for cats, which I wish there was.
Right, so I'm going to keep the, I still want to have cats, dogs, chickens separate. I'll separate. So specifically focusing on chickens, we don't have, we don't have any. We have, it's a complaint-driven process. So if there is an issue with something, essentially, we, we've done in the past, have something against them, we'll serve them, do a follow-up, and keep the chickens. That's kind of the process right now. I don't know what they do with them, but they are gone eventually. Right, yeah, hard to tell which was.
Last time we talked about chickens, it seemed like everybody in town got chickens. And then there were chickens running around the neighborhood, and then all of a sudden there were baby chickens running around the neighborhood. And I just can't imagine anybody being able to catch those chickens. But, I mean, I love chickens. I, you know.
I like to eat chicken. Maybe that's what happens to the roosters for Sunday dinner or something.
Well, the ones on my, on my site do, but then there's some who, you know, if you're only allowed three chickens, and two of them are roosters, you know, you should look up chicken math, because you get three chickens. And then, well, okay, two of them are roosters. Okay, so you go back to get two more, and they give you a good deal on five of them. You've got to take all five. Well, then that makes six chickens you have. And it just, it continues. It doesn't, it doesn't stay with three chickens.
But you have to start somewhere with some sort of quantifying number. And I think three chickens laying eggs for you every day, plenty. I understand the problem with becoming a chicken farmer, you know, urban chicken farmer, and suddenly coming up with one male who's good for nothing, chicken-wise. You know, that's on the, on the, on the animal owner. That's not something, they know that there are no roosters. They have to take care of that.
My neighbor has roosters.
Yeah, and I understand that that's the thing. But as far as this goes, I was just thinking on the item 6.80, 0.50, it's, you know, are we changing that then? Am I understanding that down here, at the current enforcement flow, to include the animal control person as the designee?
Right, so if we go to page three, so, you know, what I would want to do is update the section and include animal control officers, community service officers, code enforcement, and police officers that would be allowed to enforce.
Where, is that under the last paragraph?
Yeah, so update section to Chapter 6.08. Close to the bottom.
The proposed flow, right?
Yeah, so there's the proposed flow.
And that's on the second page.
Second page, yeah. So, and the language that I would update 6.08 to would include code enforcement, police department, and animal control. So all three parties would be able to. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't just be underneath, or you wouldn't have to wait for police officers to come contact.
I do believe we need to have a strong rule, like what you're working on. But we also have to take into account, you're talking about a small majority, minority of the people that do that. There's so many people that build nice hens, they take care of them, they're pets. So we don't want to do the rules so hard that you can't, someone can't enjoy it and do it the proper way. But we've got to have some way of cleaning out people that don't do it. Everybody, because everybody's trying to let their rooster run free. But there will be issues.
So we're going to register these chickens. There's a chicken running here, which one of us own it? Everyone's going to be, oh, it ain't mine.
If it isn't yours, I'm going to claim it, take it home.
It's a rooster, it's running free.
That's okay, my grandma used to make a real meat.
So unless they're registered and tagged somehow, how are you going to hold any enforcement on that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone that registers chickens, but we can look into that. One of the things that.
There are a few cities in the state that have registration, but for the most part, the ones that I looked at, I looked at about 20 different ordinances in the state today, including Yakima, and none of them require any kind of. But they all, the majority of them have a number assigned to the number of hens you can have. Almost all of them say no roosters. I only found two cities in the state that allow roosters. There was something that I want to counsel, if you'll allow me. So one of the things I did when I was writing Chapter 15, Airports, Title 15, Airports for the City, is I went around the state and I borrowed ordinances from everywhere, right? And if you had an airport in your city and you had an ordinance, I looked at your ordinance and grabbed what I needed to build our ordinance. I see you did the same thing here with us, pretty much copied 1504 from the Yakima Code to our 1765 or whatever. Here's my concern about when we do that, right? I don't have any problem with doing that, but Yakima is 27 square miles and 100,000 people, and we're 6.2 square miles and about 18,000 people. I wish we would look at closer cities. So I looked at one today, Ellensburg. I don't, have you looked at theirs?
I've looked at, I've looked at a couple of the tribes that use those.
What I liked about Ellensburg is they're kind of an agricultural-minded council as well, right? So when they were wrestling with this, and I looked at their minis and things of that nature, they wanted to include things in there that were based off of the size of their city. And so like a 10-foot setback and things of that nature that we have in this one, that might work for Yakima with 100,000 people and, you know, only so much space, 27 square miles. We only have 6.2 square miles of city. I mean, if people really want chickens, it doesn't take them too much to go into the county and actually, you know, raise chickens, if that's what they want to do. If they're 4-H and things of that nature, your kids are involved in that, and they need to raise chickens, I understand that. But then there should be a strict limit. And one of the things that I liked about Ellensburg was that they said, no more than four chickens are allowed at each such single-family dwelling. So they put in code that says, you can't even have chickens unless you own a single-family dwelling. So that's one thing I thought was interesting. The other thing is, chickens shall be kept in a well-ventilated enclosed coop constructed to protect chickens against varying weather conditions and predators. The coop shall have an attached enclosure run. The coop and run combined shall provide a minimum of 10 square feet of ground space per chicken. All coops and runs shall be located within a rear yard only. Coops shall be at least 25 feet from any neighboring dwelling and 10 feet from any property line. No portion of any run can be within 10 feet of any property line unless the property abuts an alley. So they were really looking at, if you're going to allow chickens, we're going to allow them, but we're only going to allow them in a specific area of the city. And we can do that, counsel. That's what this markup is for, is for us to look at those things. You know, if 10 feet's not enough, and we want 20 feet, that's our job. So, and of course, Mr. Martin's here to help us with that process. But that's one of the things that I liked. I also liked, and like you talked about how they separated it in two different, their 5.06 actually says keeping of chickens, right? So in its specific code for just chickens and nothing else. Dogs aren't included. They have dogs later on, cats as well, but I just thought that was interesting as well. So, counsel, your thoughts?
Are we running this as chickens only or poultry?
That's a good point, right?
Because that's ducks, geese, quail, pheasants.
In Ellensburg, they say male chickens over four months are not allowed. So, male chickens over four months old can't have it.
So by virtue of the way this is written, we should also then include geese, duck, turkey, or other fowl?
Even, I mean.
Even though, even though, well, yeah. But I also like the word there of something, you said something of upkeep?
Yeah.
The keeping of, the keeping of.
Yeah, they're making it very clear here that you cannot, you have to take care of these chickens. If you are hurting these chickens in any way, shape, or form, you will be fined. And they have, they're, you're guilty of a class one felony, or not, a class one misdemeanor if you do that. I didn't look up what the class one was, but I imagine it's fines.
And the other thing that I saw that our code was missing, that I do want to update, and I probably will when we further go into ordinance, I'll represent here, the RCW here, 1652 205 was the.
Oh, good, yes.
I wanted to incorporate that.
I think that's a great idea.
Me personally, I'm against chickens in downtown. I don't want chickens in my residential area. I already have chickens running around my area, roosters.
I know, I chased a few in my neighborhood.
Yeah, if they were out in the country, I have no problem with it. But, you know, this house is right next to Safeway, there could be chickens running around there.
Actually, I think those are zoning commercials, most of them, on home courts, or a lot of them are zoning commercials, so they wouldn't be.
What about like apartments?
They wouldn't be eligible today.
They wouldn't have any place.
They don't have.
There's nowhere for them to put it, right?
For a chicken, you don't have 10, 10 feet back from, you know, somewhere rather to.
You don't have a backyard.
Backyard, apartment, or duplexes.
One of the ordinances that I looked at, a city on the other side of the mountains, it says that you have to be 50 feet from the front of your house all the way back. This, you can't, can't have anything in the front yard. It has to be in the backyard, but it has to be at least 50 feet from the edge of your property. So, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we can do here, obviously. We don't have to be as restrictive, or we don't have to be as liberal in case of Yakima, where, you know, they're only allowing 10 feet. I mean, that's not a lot of space between you and chickens.
It depends on how big your backyard is too, you know?
It depends what's across the fence from you. Is it now?
Well, and some other cities also go by square footage. So they don't even allow homeowners to have chickens unless they have 7,500 square feet or more of property space. 7,500 square feet of property space.
Shoot. But my bunny rabbit didn't matter because I only had one. But I wouldn't have been able to have chickens in my lot, because I didn't have, there wouldn't have been enough separation.
Your lot, they could have.
Yeah.
And ours isn't either, and we wanted to do the same thing. We have two lots, but even then.
I think those, those blocks are.
Well, there's a couple, if you're referring to right down on 13th and 11th, there are a few lots in there that are really deep, that people could have chickens in those spaces that are far enough away from, you know, like Mr. Stremmler's home, could have had chickens in his backyard. And there's a couple other houses down in that area, too. But I think making sure that we're as strict as we need to be on the spacing of where the animals can be kept, the poultry. And I think leaning in at poultry, I think it's not a bad idea. I don't think we need to, you know.
When you put poultry, that means you have pheasants, ducks, geese, whatever.
Well, if you don't put poultry, all of those and other fowl pretty much cover that, I would think. I mean, you guys maybe go hunting and know which ones you're supposed to get, besides not shooting the neighbor's chickens, but not saying that you would, I'm sorry about that.
That was my next question.
No, no. No, because we're not supposed to fire guns inside cities. I think there's an argument about that.
There is, there is.
If you want, if you want, if you want it, never mind, that's a tough topic altogether.
If you, if you, if you put chickens, then that would discontinue the rest of the poultry, right?
No, because they're, no, I don't think so. I think you have to name them, name them out.
Right, that's what I think Mr. is calling chickens and not call it poultry.
Yeah, because if you call it poultry, then all the rest go along with that.
And I think that, I really would not want a neighbor with a. They're really loud.
They're obnoxious.
Geese.
Geese.
Yeah, I think that's just, I think you're very right. I think we need to be very, very.
Guinea, they scream. Ellensburg puts it in their code as a definition of chicken means a member of the species of Gallus, Gaius, G. Gallus domesticus, common domestic fowl. That's what they use for their definition.
Pretty good, I like that.
We can do that, we can be very specific.
Well, I think we should be, because as we're hearing, you know, there's a lot of ways around it.
I'm against it on either step, but if it does go through, we'd better define everything.
You're against chickens in town. Oh, yeah, I think we're in agreement on that, you know, but I'm just wondering about those.
I voted against it the last time this came before us. And in 2014, when it came before the Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussions about it. And I remember my mother-in-law, the chair of the commission at the time, Deanna Hall, she mentioned the idea, you know, that, to the commissioners about the distance and size and all kinds of things that we could choose as a city that we wanted. But that's not what came forward to us when it first came before the council, when Spencer Martin was on here, and he brought that item forward. So, I don't know, I'm still on the fence of no. You know, I'm on the fence, I could say. I understand the 4-H thing, right? That's the one thing that I'm really mindful of, is the fact that we have a lot of 4-H participant kids in this, in this community, and I would hate for them not to be able to have a couple of chickens outside so that they can learn to take care of them properly and things of that nature.
But for this long, we've had 4-H, and they've always had chickens and stuff.
Actually, yeah, we have chickens in the city, we all know that, right? But they're not here legally.
Yes.
I think that's the issue that the department and myself are trying to bring forward. We need a regulation.
I'm all for the penalties.
Yeah, and I think that the other reality, honestly, is people are raising chickens for two things, for eggs and also for.
Fighting.
Well, I wouldn't go, I would not go there.
They're still going on, trust me.
I don't think the chickens running in our city are for that purpose, but I'm going to err on the side of being, hoping all my citizens are doing that. That's where I'm thinking. But I do think that having very limited regulation and very limited power in this arena is just letting something happen, much like firework issues. We have to regulate in order to get people to comply, and that's.
You have to throw that out there.
Yeah, that's a big issue. You know, like I mentioned before, I had someone that had a dog at large and went sighted on their, I saw their door hanger, and the first thing I said is, who issued this? I didn't even recognize the name. And it was animal control. And it was a blue, a blue, like, door hanger, and it said, Chihuahua at large. And then there was another thing at the bottom, and they actually quoted 6.08030 and said, chickens are prohibited. The lady came to City Hall and said, how long do I have in order to, you know, find a home for my chickens or get rid of my chickens? Why don't you wait just a little bit? Because we're discussing it tonight, and we're trying to figure out what you. Why don't you wait just a little bit? Cause we're discussing it tonight and we're trying to figure out what you're going to be doing to you. But that's the reality of it, is we have the chickens in town. People do want to maintain chickens. We just need to make sure that they're doing the right thing by their animals. Them in their yards and having the ability to find them when they're not. And you're right, it's gonna be a chicken chase if we're gonna be chasing chickens, but.
Sign up employees chasing chickens.
I mean, it is something that we would need to address, but I think that this is a step in the right direction for us.
Um, I, I know I've mentioned this in the past, but we are switching to a. Let's have a pre, pre-competent. And this can kind of address, um, start to address. Uh, we could set up a. They have such a bunch of addresses. On their self-formed house. All boxes, where we have, have something that. And if we were out in the community and one of our code enforcement officers finds somebody that. Just that we can see.
I'm thinking there's some other paragraphs, um, out of the Ellensburg, um, ordinance on, on animals, poultry and livestock, or particularly poultry. Um, that we may want to include. Nope. In this one, on the fencing defined, you, you do have that the, um, not more than ten feet apart, is that where the posts go? That's on the front page of the definition.
Number four.
Yeah, four, point four.
You know chickens can fly. They can, they can jump and one flew in my yard, cutest little rooster, little banny.
Yeah, see, and it says five feet from other structures, including decks. Five feet, that's nothing.
They could fly that far.
Yeah.
I'm worried about that.
My, my dog killed the rooster. That was horrible.
Well, I've been a chicken owner my whole life, and every chicken coop I've ever built, I put a top on, cause I know there's hawks and owls everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And my chickens.
And, you know, and they have those really, the ones that are on wheels, so you can move around your yard, you know, cause.
Chicken tractor.
Yeah, chicken tractor. I get those things.
Well, and a number of the cities also identify the amount of space that you're allowed for each animal, right? So in the case of Ellensburg, um, it's ten square feet of ground space per chicken. Your run or your coop has to give. If you've got four chickens, you gotta have forty, forty square feet.
They can, they can clean up bugs, you know, quite long range. Is, is there, is, is there, well, que- question here? With knowing that some kids, you know, like, um, city kids can sometimes do chickens, you know, um, not maybe your. Buy mart, or not buy, Lyle spring chicken sale chickens, but actual, um, um, exotic chickens, grow exotic chickens. Is, is that gonna fall under this as well?
The chickens.
Chickens are chicken, yes?
No, it's, no.
Whether it's a filthy or a.
Um, naked head, naked head.
But I'm just asking, because a lot of four H kids will go to the exotic chickens because they're prettier and they're not ordinary.
And that's one of the iss- that's one of the ones that I, uh, told right now on the court, I guess, that's. I'm totally figuring this out. Um, but he does, he, he raised, they're really cool looking little, all kinds of.
Yeah, some of the exotics are.
They're about this big and.
Yeah.
For all his and.
Well, for the most part, the ordinances that I looked at today from the different cities, they separated that as an exotic animal, when they had a chapter for exotic animals.
Well, maybe that's something that we could do. Just, I just know from experience going down to the junior fair in Grandview and going in the, the poultry barn and seeing all the exotic chickens with the little kids. Because they can handle a chicken or a rabbit or a guinea or a hamster or, you know, stuff like that. But if we could have something that would kind of. Kind of an exception to the rule kind of situation. I think as far as the way they're cared for needs to be the same, and all of the, the, the regulations as far as the space that they need, that sort of thing. I think that ought to be included in that. An exception that you can have those, but you must also follow these other rules. About how big your chicken house is or your coop and your run and, and how far it is from your neighbors. I think that should be part of that same exotic chicken. I don't know, I think you could call it.
We could always reference it in the exotic, exotic animal chapter, we could always reference that, or we could reference it in the chicken chapter. That says, you know, for exotic birds, please see chapter whatever.
And I'm thinking exotic birds, because that's, there's a, I mean, I think.
I think that's a good idea too, because I know of two places where birds are being transported and they stay in one, this, this one family's front yard. In regular little indoor birdhouses, and they're in the tree, and then they're all gone. Just there like overnight or something. There was another guy who was worked at the post office. They grew, do you, I don't know if you were here, Greg, when the lamb birdies had, had, um, exotic birds. They kept exotic birds over on Idabel. I don't know if you were here when. It's been a while, many years ago. But they, but they raised them in their house. I mean, they had it on the backside of their house. They kept all the birds.
Well, we need to get back to the chicken.
Yeah. Well, he's, we're talking, he brought up birds. I just followed that shit. But, uh, yeah, yeah, I think that, I think we should do that for sure.
I, I think what I'm hearing is that we, um, know the direction you'd like this to go as far as the three is the number that you're comfortable with.
Right.
No roosters, make space between the coop and the neighbors.
Yep.
Um, and then I think a separate, um, exotic animal ordinance. Um, I know we won't have this work done for anybody.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And if you, at that meeting, you don't feel like you, still don't feel like you're there with it, we will hold it. Not in the main workshop. The main workshop is our.
Ceremony.
Ceremony, so.
Swearing ceremony.
But we can, we can definitely, um, put this on one of our planning sessions as well, um, and then, uh, just for information, I'm trying to get together. A May, uh, special meeting for city council. I'd like us to. My staff has been doing that, and so before we get into budget, I would like to sit down and do a five, ten, twenty year plan with council. On where we're going for. That's been a, a key thing that we have missed here, and that's why we're still holding on to things like. And things like that.
Just, can I just mention also, when you, you, in that first bit, the options, proposed options, um. I'm just looking at them again, but the thing about, um, updating the enforcement section to include, you know, who, where the flow is. Um, with the animal control thing. I think that's really important, stuff in there. And then setting up an infraction section here.
Listen, those numbers are just kind of numbers that pull out of that a little bit, but the, that's usually the mark for people, if people.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a quick question on the animal control officer. So say we hire an animal control officer, and this might be. Do they, do we have to provide a facility for them to work in, or do they contract with YMCA or no kill shelters? How does that work?
So, so this was gonna be my, so I imagine that this is, this is gonna be a conversation for the future, yeah. So, um, if we con- so. Lot, lot of things. Probably the only, um, the only shelter in Yakima County, Yakima, uh, is the humane society. Their channels are full, they're full all the time, right? We have a full-time animal control officer, or even, then we end up going like split part-time between. Right? Again, it's gonna be. For the human. I imagine that there's probably gonna be conversation, uh, another facility, or where do we keep these animals, what would happen? Also, there're gonna be their channels, there're gonna be that. Really, kind of a big thing, um.
No, I know. And it was cost prohibitive when we asked, uh, City Manager Don Day to look into it. Were you on the finance at the time? Yeah. Um, you know, when Dr. Mercer closed his, his, his business and actually retired, we looked at buying his building, um, as a possible shelter for the city. Uh, but that was way too much for.
Uh, also, I was on the humane society board for a couple of years. I have a little bit of insight there, how they operate and. Happy to kind of invite them to the table. But they were looking for a shelter. So it might be worth. Cause really, I mean, there's really nobody between.
There's a real need for it.
Lost dogs and found dogs and.
Facebook has got them every day. Somebody's lost their dog or their cat or.
Also need a new vaccination, or not vaccination, the neuter clinic, you know, though, there's not enough of those around. It's kind of a domino effect.
There's also that shortage that now.
Yeah.
And they work on exotic animals as opposed to, or as opposed to dogs and cats. I mean, there's a lot more money in that.
So, you know, Mr. Warren, just, um, I referenced, uh, five dot three zero three one zero in Ellensburg. Any questions, comments on this item? Mr. Andrew, any additional questions for council on this item?
Uh, no, I think I just know exactly where we need to go with this, and we'll get to work on it, and then, um, kind of unpack the other person's. Animal, we'll just.
You didn't do it, that's, that was good.
You know, in March is when Lyle gets their birds.
Just before Easter, isn't it?
Yeah, they last a couple of months.
And then the, and then the love wears off.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's the best time to buy them. And, and, uh, if we draw this out. See, I would be the first one to get chickens. And.
And I'd come buy them from you the eggs. Give you that side hustle.
It's, it's a big conversation. There's a lot to unpack in this, and especially when you jump over the dogs.
Oh, yeah. I'm just wondering how, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a countywide issue, so I have been speaking to managers, um, about possible. To the sheriff. Uh, I don't know. So, yeah, I think, I think really also in speaking with other city managers, it's an issue in most towns.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we share the, um, current animal control officer from the humane society with Grandview. And here's the biggest issue, they evaded fox from, well, probably eight thirty because they have to clean their rig and make sure it's all stocked up. And they arrive in our city around nine o'clock, nine fifteen. We're supposed to have a four-hour stint. They call for an emergency in Grandview. They go to Grandview, and they don't always come back, or they come back later. Um, I think the, the sharing is not necessarily the best, um, solution for us, so maybe it is we say we need a full-time for sunny side. And they're here, or we have a VR employee again, and back to the way we used to do it. And then, I think we discussed this in two thousand and fifteen, the last time. And I'll, I'll let you know that our finances at that time were so poor that we were, that was the year we were operating on three days. Operating in a general fund. We are in a much healthier state now, so we could look for other ways to find some. So, or have the match to find a grant for this. And right now, there's so much infrastructure grants out through, um, federal. Probably something out there.
Well, you know, council, way back when now, um, when we worked with Prosser and Grandview and created that solution for us. It was two days in Sunnyside, two days in Grandview, and one day in Prosser. That, and, and the chiefs of police, the three chiefs were supposed to coordinate when and where. Um, and I, I know that kind of fell apart, and then Prosser pulled out. So what, Grandview's still in with us?
Yeah, they're, they do fifty fifty.
Okay, all right.
So they take twenty hours and we get twenty hours.
Okay.
And they don't seem to have a bigger problem when I talk to test about it. That is maybe what our, that we also are almost twice as big as they are, so that then, you know, we need to.
It's worse on the weekends, cause they know they're not here.
Yeah.
That's true. My question is, if, um, if we even have the shared thing with Grandview, I forget our own code enforcer or animal catcher? Are they gonna deal with chickens if we do approve chickens?
Yes, that would be a part of the job duty.
Absolutely, whatever.
I, I mean, that, in reality, if we're gonna allow poultry, chickens, whatever it is, it needs to be under the animal control purview. And we need to give code enforcement the same ability to enforce, and our police officers, just at a minimum. Because really, it takes more, the more eyes you have, the better, better ability, and then that also lets citizens know that we're. We're out there.
We can't knowingly just look the other way, knowing that some of the people are breaking the law right now, and we've got to do something about it, right? I mean, I, I don't want to come down hard on these people. At the same time, though, we can't just allow it. That's chaos. We can't allow that. So, we gotta, we gotta do something. So I'm, I'm all for us having more discussions about this and getting into the nitty gritty when it comes to, when it comes to dogs, that's gonna be.
How many people came to ta- talk about this?
Uh, the.
Uh-huh.
Already talked about it, yeah. Um, did you have an open hearing?
Yeah, we had a certain meeting.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything about it, you know?
I'll, I'll throw it back out there again, and I'll put it out, put another notice in that paper about it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and council, it's well within our purview to hold a public hearing. If you want to bring people here instead of a planning commission and have them come and talk to you about this, we're more than happy. Do it. We just need to notice it properly and make sure they're aware.
I'd kind of like to know how many in our city are pushing for chickens.
I don't think, in my opinion, anyone is pushing for chickens. I think chickens are there. That is.
I think they're just kind of.
I don't think.
Under the radar.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna find that people are coming to city hall saying, well, although I did have the lady today saying, how long do I need to.
You want to spend illegally having chickens and then get caught.
Correct. And, but that's what I'm saying. I don't believe it's a push. I think that they're there.
I mean, it's happened for years.
I know, like I said, there's chickens up on my street.
Chickens, chickens have probably been grandfathered into the, to the, the culture, uh, because of the agricultural nature of our community, even though. Many of us are not necessarily in agriculture in this room. Um, but chickens and po- and livestock in people's backyards is, is a grandfathered in almost. And a lot of the properties you were calling historical properties.
Yeah, there's, there's, I recall the old flats.
Yeah, there's, there's places there where there were actual barns and horses and milk cow, or maybe a chicken, a couple pigs. Because that was, that was what, that was your food, that, you know.
And he has goats, if that's the next thing we'll meet on the table, or we'll have goats in town. I mean.
My big surprise, very first time, very first time I was in Mapton, going after I got married, I moved to Mapton, first Sunday I was there. Um, the week prior to Sunday, there'd been a little, little. First Sunday I was there, um, the week prior to Sunday, there'd been a little, little goat in the front yard. Oh, I thought that was so cute, a little goat over there. Come Sunday.
Sorry, any excuse for just...
The goat was dinner.
Mm.
And they did all the business out there and I, I told Dan, what are they doing? And he says, oh, they're just gonna have a big party and so it's just part of the culture. I mean, you know, so...
Yeah, it is.
But having chickens in your backyard or anybody having chickens, you have three or four or however many they, I mean, it's part of the culture in some places.
Grappa had fifty, we were Hispanic.
Yeah, I, I am...
Well, but we do need to, like you've been saying, rather than, you know, we can't let it run amok. We gotta...
But it's always been illegal, but we have them. Fireworks have been illegal, but they're here. Yeah.
I, I know and, and these are things we gotta do.
And, and, you know, you're right, you, these are, these are things, but these are things that all cities are, are dealing with, right?
Right.
I mean, you know...
We're not alone there.
No, not at all. And I, I think it's good that we have these conversations, obviously. Um, at the same time, we just want a safe and vibrant community for our, our, the people that live here. And I think it's good for us to, to embrace the fact that we are agricultural community, right? So...
But we can put limits...
I, I will tell you one thing, council. I've only had one person ask me about chickens in the entire time I've been on council and that was council member Martin, Spencer Martin. So when he brought the item before council when I was mayor. So, and I told him then, I would, I'd tell you, if you do that, you better have a second because I'm not supporting it. I just think we're a small city, six point two square miles. If somebody wants to raise chickens, it's real easy for them to live in the county and raise chickens.
You ready to go on to the next?
I think so.
We good?
Ready to move?
Alright, moving on, council, upcoming council meetings. What do we have for Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting, as City Mayor?
Stormwater ordinance amendment, uh, franchise ordinance, budget amendment number one, and LTAC twenty twenty-three's funding recommendation.
Uh, Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
We have nothing on the twenty-fourth, actually nothing to the rest of the agenda.
Okay. It'll change.
It'll change.
We'll, we'll come up with a time.
Probably within the week.
So that was budget amendment, stormwater, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it up.
No.
LTAC, LTAC.
It's in your packet on the very last page.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I was so busy looking at chapter six that I didn't look at this. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have the May first swearing ceremony in County Center. And that's it right now on the agenda. Council, do you have items to give to the mayor or the city manager for the meeting?
And how, eh, how to, are we going to put in a special meeting for some long-term planning?
She's working on that.
We're working on that for May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it will be, um, outside. I do want to have this, this special meeting in Sunnyside, not in another city. I want to make sure that our citizens are able to attend and not necessarily, you know, get feedback, but at least hear what we have to say. And, and then if there is a time when they want to weigh in, they can do that if they know you send you an email or, or talk to you about it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, just so you know, that's not been the, the process, the process or practice from council when it comes to... Matter of fact, Ms., uh, Ms. Hart will tell you, um, we each came to a strategic retreat as a candidate and the audience should not say a word and just listen.
And that's exactly the way I plan to propose it, is they sit in the audience and listen. And then if they do have something that they, that we're not going in the right direction, then they can talk to you individually.
One of the things that happened at that, that meeting too is when there was a break, I was allowed to go speak to somebody or other. And so if I did have a glimmer of a thought, I did have an opportunity to voice it. Um, so there, there are chances like that for the general citizen to talk maybe to their council, counselor. Um, you know, saying, well, you were talking about this or that or this or that, or have you considered this and this and this? So there is a little bit of time that a smart person like all of us at the table could say, oh, I'm gonna burn his ear about this. But, uh, so, yeah, but I really respected them because of that, because it wasn't, I was there to learn. I wasn't there to contribute or to...
We appreciated that. I mean, I, I told that to my colleagues afterward, the fact that you were there. You were the only candidate who actually showed up.
Were we gonna talk about the containers?
So that'll, when that comes, that'll come back later.
On twenty-seventh, council agreed that we would split this up into pieces and so this is just the one piece. The containers are gonna come back in another meeting.
Good note.
Okay.
Yeah, it will come back if the whole separate, separate order.
I thought, yeah, okay.
And it needs to, because there are a lot of things going on with shipping containers right now and additional dwelling units are being made out of shipping containers. And, um, that's something we, I mean, Tesla's home is a shipping container.
Yeah.
So we need to be mindful of that because those are self-contained units that, that are in a shipping container that just show up and put down. And everything, you know, you've got solar power and all that stuff.
And the tiny houses are right in there too, as well.
Well, and the state legislature has, I mean, the government's gonna pass this.
Yeah.
He's gonna pa- he's gonna sign it.
Yeah, that was in the AWC.
Some updates that I'm gonna be bringing to you that have to... But, so, we'll be seeing those probably soon.
So if I wanted to talk about the flock cameras, flock, is that what they're called?
Flock cameras?
Yeah, um, can I ask a question about them now or do I have to?
Um, it's a workshop, so we can't, we can't have you introducing new items, but you, we can definitely, um, during your time as a member of council, you can do it. Or you can ask the mayor to put it on the agenda and have the city manager brief.
Why don't you just call me?
Okay, okay, I'll do that.
That works too. I didn't know if you wanted to have it in the public, that's the whole point. If you wanted to have a public conversation about it...
I just had a question about it, 'cause...
Yeah, just call me or we can chat after this.
Okay.
Okay, council, uh, we've reached the adjournment. Uh, Mr. Farmer didn't show, but given his current status, I'm gonna accuse him from tonight's meeting. Or accuse him from tonight's meeting if there's no objection.
No objection.
During seeing no objection, so order Mr. Farmer to be excused from tonight's proceedings. I know of no other business to come before this. You got the body and would adjourn the meeting if there's no objection. During seeing no objection, so order we are adjourned at seven, eight, seven P.M.